Good afternoon. Welcome to our special meeting of the 2017, October 23rd. Can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Committee members, Armenian?
President.
Garibian?
President.
Gazarian?
President.
Ramirez?
President.
Chair Vidician?
President.
The agenda for the October 23, 2017, meeting of the CDBG Advisory Committee was posted on or before Friday, October 20th, 2017, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item two, introductions and presentations at A, introduction of new CDBG Advisory Committee member Ronnie Garibian.
Thank you, Chair Vidician, members of the Advisory Committee. I'd like to welcome Mr. Ronnie Garibian to the committee. He's been a resident of Glendale for 34 years, and he's in the real estate industry. He's the Vice President of Washington Capital Real Estate Services. He has 26 years' experience in real estate and commercial lending, and he's a member of many service organizations in Glendale, one being the Boy Scouts, ANCA. He's a member of the St. Mary's Church down in Central, and also a member of the Glendale Association of Realtors. We're excited to have him on board, and Mr. Garibian will welcome you.
Thank you.
And looking forward to working with you in the next...
Absolutely, looking forward to it.
However, how many years?
Thank you so much. Luckily, I know most of you guys are just members of Ramirez, but appreciate it and looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Item three, minutes at A approval of the minutes of the August 14, 2017, CDBG Advisory Committee meeting.
Any motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion second? No seconds?
Well, you seconded it, didn't you? You can't? Can't you?
I can, I guess. Second?
I'm sorry, because you're the chair, you're not able to second it. We need somebody else.
I thought so.
I thought they were tied or something.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The meeting, the minutes, didn't say they were not approved? What was the...
Those were the February meeting minutes that were not approved, last meeting, but right now, we're asking for approval of the August 14 meeting minutes.
Our last meeting, the August 14 last meeting.
I must have misread. Oh, okay, yeah. No, I was looking for the minutes.
Okay.
Second?
Have you got a second? Roll call, please.
Committee members, Armenian?
Yes.
Garibian?
I was in president.
You're upstate? Okay. Gazarian? Yes, okay. Ramirez, yes?
Yes.
And Chair Vidician?
Yes.
Thank you.
May I make just a kind of point of order? If you have no vote, it's no vote, not an abstention, right?
Um, well...
An abstention means you're not voting. You have, yes or no? You have no vote. Just a point of clarification.
Objection.
Thank you.
Just so you know.
Yeah, I was in president.
Item four is oral communications. We don't have any cards. Item five, business agenda at A, reports, and one is report on eligibility of CDBG capital improvement projects located outside of city boundaries.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, welcome back again for our next meeting, and I did want to follow up on a report for the eligibility of CDBG capital improvement projects and projects outside of the Glendale boundaries. If you remember last meeting, there was a question regarding the approval of a project that is cited or improved that is not in the city of Glendale, but is outside of the Glendale boundary, and that was, and that example was a CDBG project for Home and Netmen. Staff had provided a, has provided a report to the committee regarding the background of this project, and actually goes way back to 1997, when we had an original request on the eligibility of a project outside the city boundary. That time, we had funded Home and Netmen for some improvements to the original building on San Fernando Road on Los Angeles, in Los Angeles, and we did ask HUD back in March 26, 1977, I'm sorry, 1997, to concur with staff's recommendation that a project outside of Los Angeles' boundary is eligible, and HUD did come back and concurred of our decision. I am lost in trying to find the exact memo from them, but certainly, there are reports back from other citations that do show that we're allowed to do a project outside of Glendale. Now, the caveat is that it has to be a facility or a project or an activity that benefits primarily Glendale residents, and so, we always go with the reports that are submitted by the agency, regardless who it may be, to show evidence that the residents there are, in fact, Glendale residents, participants, and that has been shown by Home and Netmen and other agencies as well, that the improvements did benefit majority of persons, were Glendale residents. In Home and Netmen's case, it was about 80, an average of about 82%, depending on which quarter we were looking at, but an average of about 82% of the residents are, participants are Glendale residents, and that's pretty much an average like our other agencies, and that would be Catholic Charities, who may serve about 90% of Glendale, maybe 10% outside of Glendale, because across the street is, as you know, is Los Angeles on San Fernando Road, and so, their location makes it also a location for LA residents to come in. The second caveat is a lot of the LA residents around the area work in Glendale, so a lot of the time, they do take advantage of some of the services that are offered by our agencies that are in Glendale. But in this case, we not find any ineligible activity with Home and Netmen or any agency outside of Glendale. Again, one other caveat is that the city may also choose to limit its funds to a more restrictive policy of not allowing funds for projects outside of the Glendale area, and that will need to be approved by the City Council, if that should be a direction. But by and large, we still can implement projects outside of Glendale with HUD funds.
All right, great. That explains a lot, and thank you for your work. Mr. Ramirez, I know you had some questions about this and some concerns. I hope this answers your questions.
I still have, I still have questions.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Sure, go ahead.
Well, the way I read the, the section 570.39 and the response, it says that may fund, may assist in an activity outside, and so, I've, I know we do that, and I think that qualifies. But my concern is that it's a capital improvement project that's not in the neighborhood and not in the community, and that's all, that's the concern I've had. I have no problem with the, the activity, the programs, just the idea that we've been funding this for, I think the last audit was several hundred thousand dollars, and we continue to do that, and it is the main campus, the headquarters almost, and so, we have a campus in Glendale, and I'd like to see the funding stay in Glendale, and that's my concern, but I realize that this is a City Council decision. They made the decision once, and they're sticking to it. I'm not inclined to be, believe that any one of these members here would disagree, so that is a discrepancy that I think exists, and dealing with federal funds, discrepancies are important, and as a member of essentially an oversight committee, if you see them, you have to raise them, and if you decide that you're good with them, you're good with them, because I'm not the decider.
Thank you.
But I do have that continued concern, because it's, as far as I can tell, and it's federal funds, those are my funds. I like my funds to stay in my community and in my neighborhoods, so that's, that's the reason. I mean, I know it doesn't square with, with some of you, but that's fine, too.
It's not about squaring or not squaring, it's, everyone has its own opinion and understanding, and...
Exactly.
As from what we understand and what we see and what the directions that we've given from the staff, and understanding that, it's, this is not even, from my understanding, it's not even City Council's decision, it's HUD's decision. If the HUD doesn't approve these projects, because no matter what we say here, the HUD has to approve those projects. If the HUD doesn't approve it, then, you know, that's what it is, that's the end result for us, but once HUD approves these projects, by knowing exactly where the project is, where the properties are, and what the circumstances are, so I don't see any harm, any wrong, in that sense. Besides that, you know, again, if the HUD had came back and said, "No, there is any kind of a concern or misunderstanding," then I will be the first one to stop it or question it and see how we can resolve it. However, I believe, in my opinion, this is, this is set in a stone, in a way.
If I can just respond, I'm just responding to what staff asked of HUD, and that's where I have, you know, you asked HUD to concur that the CDBG funds may assist in an activity outside the jurisdiction, and so, I'm thinking the activity is programming, social services, those kinds of projects, and not, not capital improvements. That's it.
Activities has to be, if I may, activities has to be in a location, a certain location, some certain place. They are doing what they're doing with their social services and all those activities that they're doing, they have to have a place to do it, so that's the location. If the activities are approved for the location, for the organization, that means the location is approved, location, that's, I think, hand to hand. We can't have a location and activity somewhere else that don't work together.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure. I just wanted to cite the actual paragraph that's being discussed, that staff prepared a report on, so first of all, thank you to staff for a comprehensive look at this, but the actual paragraph states, "On approximately April 17, 1997, HUD concurred with the city's determination that in accordance with section 570.39 of the HUD regulations, the city is allowed to assist a facility improvement project outside the city if reasonable benefits from the activity will accrue to Glendale residents," which is what we're talking about here. And further in the report, I won't bother reading the entire thing, it is a matter of public record, if anyone is interested, but Home and Netmen has year over year provided adequate evidence that the people benefiting from the facility and the programs run in the facility are, in fact, Glendale residents and do meet the qualifications of low and moderate income within the area, geographic area that we're looking at. So, while everyone, every commissioner is entitled to their own opinion, of course, in my opinion, if the facility were located 100 miles from here, we would probably be questioning how it is that Glendale residents are actually benefiting from the facility and the programs. In this particular case, we're talking about a building, Home and Netmen has two buildings. One building is within city border limits, one building is right across the border, they are right next to each other, so we're not really talking about far distances from the city of Glendale, and this is why that facility actually is able to benefit the residents of the city in this particular case. I think if we were talking about something more extreme, everyone would be questioning it, so I don't see a problem with it. I do hope that this report at least addresses and clarifies the situation, and why it is that both City Council and past CDBGs have gone forward with the appropriate capital funding programs, as well as the social service programs that we have funded in the past. We didn't this past funding cycle for Home and Netmen, but in the past, we have. So, I'm, I'm completely in support of our continued funding that we've provided year over year for this particular facility from a capital perspective, because I think the beneficiaries of it are the folks that do reside in the city. Thank you.
Chair. Any other comment, question? Yes?
Right before, obviously, I did some research when I saw the past videos. You know, she does probably have a right concern, especially with the facility, and obviously, I did my own research, then I got the report from the staff. Thank you, great report. But one thing's really, me being in the finance and the approvals with the HUD, I work with HUD often, I noticed that the comment that everybody else sees in May 2015, it says "The facility improvement projects were monitored by the HUD community," not just the program itself, but it says "The facility improvement projects were monitored by HUD Community Planning and Development Program, and HUD did not make any concerns or findings regarding eligibility." So if the HUD approved the facility that it was submitted at, I think we should be okay with that, because HUD already approved the facility project, and I think it spells out in the report.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Nope? All right. Thank you. What's next, please?
Next is 582, update on CDBG capital improvement projects.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, last, our last meeting, you requested, committee requested to have a little bit of, well, actually, the last few meetings, requested to have a little bit of visuals of the past CDBG projects funded by the committee for fiscal years 17, eight, I'm sorry, 16, 17, and actually, the prior year, 15, 16. So we went and did a few pictures for some of the projects. We have myself and also Armin, who will come in, speak on a few of the other projects we have, but generally, we've been able to manage the projects with our nonprofits pretty successfully, except for one exception, an agency that returned funds back. All the prior year projects have been started, or at least started or completed, so I'm going to run through this very quickly, and the first one is the Door Hope project that was funded way back in 14, 15, and 15, 16, for some bathroom projects, what was basically plumbing throughout 13 units of that facility. Now, I cannot give you the direct, the actual confidential address or any other photos, really, of the facility, because we, it is a confidential site for transition housing. This is one of the restrooms we did, it was all, if you can imagine, it really needed some work, and we put tile in, new toilets, and new shower, and hand sink, and tile all the way up to the hallway, so really, very nice work done by the contractor. Now, Door Hope has a couple more projects pending. We have a flooring improvement project, which bids are coming in for that project, and roofing and solar panel projects, which have already been started. Construction hasn't started, the permit process has started. Solar panels usually take about three months to get through the process of getting a design done, and then getting that all approved by Water and Power, and then the Building Department, so it does take a little bit of time to get the solar projects going with design plans. It's almost like submitting a plan check for a project, because you do have to go through various design entities. Next is Essentia, and you'll see this as an annual allocation of about $230,000 for the Essentia building, which is the homeless facility that currently is on Tyler Street, and this is the original building. How we used the Section 108 funds to convert that, basically warehouse, into a very nice building. Oh, doesn't work on the screen, on pictures. So that's actually the current bottom there is the, is the, oh, you're doing that one, okay. So that's our current project. That's why we're spending the $230,000 for the $10 million, sorry, $10 million, $2 million grant or loan that Essentia received. And currently, we are working on a solar panel project for Home and Netmen, I'm sorry, for Essentia, I'm getting these mixed up here. Essentia, Essentia did a roofing project as well, as part of their matching funds. They wanted to get a white cool roof to go on just before the solar panels, so they can really increase their efficiency and conserve energy and heat. This is a beautifully done cool roof. I was up there, and you can just skate on that thing, it's so, so nice, and the panels will go up on the, on the roof here. We are in design, finishing actually the permit for design work, and we should start in a couple of weeks for panels. The project that was completed recently, and I know the chair was there, and some of the committee members were at the grand opening of Palmer Park, was one of our projects that were funded with CDBG over a number of years, I believe about $900,000 CDBG funds, and it has a beautiful basketball court, wading pool, and the playground equipment area with the shades, the shade structure built in. We really like the shade structures in our parks, because now, with this kind of summer heat, it's really getting unbearable now, and we really want to make sure everybody's, the equipment is safe and, and safe for use for kids, so it's really a nice feature that we have now to add in the shade structures. So I'm going to turn to Armin Hunanyan, and she'll give us a little bit of a brief background on the other project we're funding with CDBG.
Good afternoon, Chair Vidician and committee members. So I'm going to go round down of what we've done for Home and Netmen Youth Center, the South Campus. We, we have done, this is the second floor, second phase of the bathroom project, we're finishing up, we just ordered the doors, and for both bathrooms, we'll be putting them in, but we essentially revamped the entire bathrooms. We put tiles in, we put new vanity, I mean, the toilets, the partitions were taken out, painted, brought it back, so basically, we got organized and changed completely, brand new, two bathrooms. Sorry. Go ahead, Moisés. The first floor was done previous to the second floor, which was done for ADA compliance as well, so we have complete ADA bathrooms on the first floor currently, which we were lacking, and we are in compliance right now. It looks great, the kids, you know, we, they have about 500 kids daily going in and out of those bathrooms, so it was really run down when we touched the project. Now, it's brand new, clean, and good to go, so to say. And then, we have, Home and Netmen was one of the first projects we had for solar, solar panel project. It, I was the project manager, and it went very smoothly. It was an interesting project, because we had to work with LA, DWP, and LA Public Works, so it worked out. This project was completed 2016, and we're a year into it, so we're currently looking at how much saving actually we've done, and what Home and Netmen will be doing with those savings. With my meetings with the agency, they will be doing a lot of athletic programs, more athletic programs, basketball, volleyball, soccer, martial arts, so they are accounting into it, and we'll be looking at that to see what kind of more programs we're going to do with the cost savings that we did for solar panel project. This one is the second phase of the same building, which we have just completed, but we're waiting for the LA WP to give us all the paperwork, so we could energize the system, so we could start the same process we did for the first phase. It takes a while, but once it energizes, then they start the process for them to start saving and start getting the result of what the project is. But currently, we're completely, structure-wise, we're done, it looks great, and we're into closing it. This project is a unique project, because Armenian Relief Society had some issues with their clientele as far as getting in and out of those doors, and we had security issues. So the first phase, we did 16 cameras inside, outside, their parking structure, their plaza that is heavily used by seniors, so we installed the security system in there. Second phase, we went in on, this is the first floor, we did, and this is the second floor, we did, I'm sorry, this, this is, when you walk in, this is the entrance, and the upstairs one is the second floor. So these are the automatic doors, ADA doors that were installed, and it works beautifully, and the security system is tied into the doors, and the entire system works right now currently, so it's, it's a good thing that we did, and it's ADA compliance. This is one of our projects that we're barely going to start in, in a week and a half or so, in 10 days. This is Glendale Adventist Medical Center, Lee Wells Senior Center, we're going to install ADA doors, and it's a ramp, ADA ramp project. We've been working with this building for a while, too. We had the bathrooms done inside, we've done their AC unit, we worked endlessly. It's an old building, but it's a very nice project, because it's going to serve a lot of seniors. Currently, they're doing yoga in there, but once, you know, it'll be done, they'll be done this week, because we're going to start construction and fencing it off, so this is going to be, again, similar to automatic ADA doors, but in a wider, bigger range, because it's, it has to have the hospital compliance as well, so the doors are going to be much wider and bigger, but it's going to be ADA compliance. And the side ramp you see on the first picture here, it's going to all be, all that wall is going to go, and it's all going to be ADA accessible, since the rehab center is right across from there, too, they're going to be using that ramp quite a lot. So that's our next phase of the project for Glendale Adventist.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Some questions? Sir?
Thank you for that report, and I appreciate the comments, particularly about the solar project on Home and Netmen, and it, where that offset goes in terms of offsetting utility costs, and hopefully, that money going back to program benefit or facility benefit that gets a more tangible benefit to the end user, which is really what we're trying to get to in terms of direct benefit. I don't know whether you or staff have a sense of, because the Home and Netmen project, just to correct one statement you made, is not actually the first one, it's the third one, I believe, of the solar projects. Door of Hope was first, Essentia was second, and Home and Netmen was third, so I'd like to see some sort of more specific accounting. I know these things take time for the actual data to come in on savings, but certainly, Door of Hope should, since they were much earlier, a couple years earlier, I'd like to see some data in your future report that shows the actual tracking of, you know, offset utility costs going back into some sort of more tangible, direct benefit to the end user of the facility, because that's ultimately how we can track a benefit. Like, when you see bathrooms, you can, obviously, that's a very tangible benefit to the end user, but you can put all the solar panels you want on a roof, the end user won't know it's up there, right? So we have to somehow track those dollars back, and I don't know whether, where and how that mechanism is that we can do that, to start asking for some sort of more line item to line item financial report that shows that sort of tracking back. I think, since Home and Netmen is already thinking that way, I think it's fair for us to ask that of the other beneficiaries as well.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Armenian, yes, we actually, it's actually the reverse, Home and Netmen is the first. Those are actually older projects, and they're just getting done with the second phase.
What year was that?
That was a 95, 96, first one.
That predates me, then.
No, you were, no, I'm sorry, 2000.
Home and Netmen, 2015, 16, Home and Netmen, first solar panel project was 2015, 16.
Oh, they had two phases, right? I think.
The first phase, yes, yes, we are ready to do the accounting, and we're working with Home and Netmen to get the, their accounting is working actually on it, we just didn't have the information to bring it to you, but they're going to basically tell us how much the cost saving they have for utility, so in return, we could figure out what programs we could add on to with that funding.
Right, that's great. So I appreciate that Home and Netmen is doing that, and I think it's important that we, you know, to be fair, that ask the other programs to do it as well.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other question? Yes?
On the Home and Netmen, do we have, I know you don't have the number, but do we have how many kilowatt or watt they're using in average per month? What is their usage?
On daily basis, about 500.
On daily, monthly?
On daily basis, we have about 500 kids going in and out of each building.
No, how many kilowatts or watts of power?
Oh, watts of power?
Monthly basis or anything? Have a estimate? Nothing? No, that's fine, if you don't have it, now we'll get it.
I don't have it off my head, but I'm sure if I look at the specs, I would have that, because we did ask that question, I just don't recall it right now, but I, we could get back to you on that, we could send an email, giving you that information.
As far as the white roofing, is that a paint, or it's a special substance?
It's a coating.
It's just a coat of paint?
It's a thick polymer coating.
Because I knew years ago, somebody approached me that there was a fire retardant material like a paint, that it was, A, would, for fire purposes, it was a retardant, and would do saving energy, so as long as it's that, or just a can of paint, or, so it's just a paint, I assume.
Just ask Mr. Armenian, he actually said it is a coat.
It's a coating that does both, it seals from a waterproofing perspective, but as well as it's a, has reflective qualities and a certain amount of reflection back, so that it reduces your energy costs.
And lastly, on Glendale Adventist, do we know how many... And lastly, on Glendale Adventist, do we know how many people do they serve on that facility in average? Is it a big one, small one?
I believe they serve, all now, their, their program is called Senior.
Livwell Senior Center.
Livwell Senior. Livwell Senior Center, and they serve about 320 persons that they submit applications for, I believe, a year.
Yeah, because they serve meals as well.
Yeah, they serve at health clinics, they serve, you know, health information. It's about 320 persons a year that they service, and not only at the hospital, at their, their center, but at different locations. They do a lot of outreach. So they'll go out to our senior center and do flu shots for seniors. They'll go out to different events and provide information. So that, that really gives them a home base to really have programs functioning there. They started yoga, and I'm sure they'll, they'll expand to other programs as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to highlight one, one last aspect of this project. It's actually recipient of 2017 Congressional Recognition of Excellence Award for Best CDBG Facility Improvements Project. So it did win an award from Congressman Adam Schiff and against other Los Angeles area, San Jose County area projects. So it was a very well-liked project with the type of matching funds that we received from CDBG, a lot of the other park funds. So it was a award that we should be receiving this month. So certainly welcome the chair to, the chair and the committee to go with us to the congressman's office and receive that award when it comes available.
It'll be great. Thank you. It is a great park. It's a beautiful park. I was there on the ground opening. It's real beautiful.
Perfect use of federal funds, wouldn't you say?
Absolutely. Okay. Any other questions? If not, who's next, please?
Five B action items at one selection of new chair and vice chair.
Oh, that's, that's where we are? Can we delay that? Okay, I guess I have to turn the meeting to Secretary, and, go ahead.
The business before the CDBG Advisory Committee is the selection of a new chair. I will now entertain nominations for that office.
I'd like to nominate Committee Member Lila Ramirez.
Are there any further nominations for the office of chair?
I would also nominate Mr. Ramirez as well.
Unless there are any further nominations, I will move forward with the roll call. Committee Member Armenian?
Yes.
Abadissian?
Yes.
Karibian?
Yes.
Gazarian?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
I now declare Committee Member Ramirez the duly elected chair of the CDBG Advisory Committee. Madam Chair, the task before you now is to open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
Oh, you're not going to handle that?
No, you do it.
You're the chair now.
You're the chair.
It's your big first job. The pressure is on.
Okay, nominations are in order for the position of vice chair.
Guess I'll nominate Mr. Armenian.
Any other nominations?
Mr. Armenian, it's good to meet you.
Hearing none, then we declare the nominations closed, and Armenian elected by unanimous acclamation. We can take a vote on that if you like.
Sure. Committee Members, Armenian?
All abstained.
Abadissian?
Yes.
Karibian?
Yes.
Gazarian?
Yes.
And Chair Ramirez?
Yes.
And now declare Committee Member.
Duly elected vice chair. Oh, that means we have to move?
Yes. Now you get the big chair.
Well, I don't know how big it is, but.
Well, at least we're together again.
See, now we're neighbors on the dais, too.
We're neighbors.
It's not just the neighborhood.
Sure.
Next item.
Next item is 5B2, review and approve fiscal year 2018-19 CDBG program priorities. A is a motion to approve the fiscal year 2018-19 CDBG program priorities.
Madam Chair, members of committee, I did want to just give a real brief overview of what the priorities has proposed in our report for the CDBG coming year fiscal year 2018-19. I would say that priorities really have not changed significantly to change our RFP or any type of project, per se. I would highlight a couple of things that were noted on our reports. The first thing is, I did want to give our staff some of the kudos because they were the ones who assisted with the public hearing that we had on September 20th at the community center, and we had about 41 persons come, and about five persons who couldn't come wanted to comment as well. So we did have a very active group on the 20th, and you'll get to see their, their comments on one of the spreadsheets we have here. The other part is, is certainly looking at our demographic analysis of the city, and where are we with our population and our key demographics, of course, being poverty and age, and also income levels, with income levels slightly below LA County. However, the poverty level still remains approximately the same as we had in a couple of years ago, and I believe it's 11.3% of all Glendale families live below the poverty line. That's a little lower than LA County. However, one thing that certainly Glendale has seen is a increase in the senior population, and we do see a slightly higher percentage of the seniors living in Glendale, about 22.68%, as 44,000 persons are over 60 years. So that's increasing from its previous of 19% in 2010. It could be that by 20, will be our next census, 2020, we may have close to 24, 25% of our population 60 years and older. So it is certainly a statistic that we're looking at. Other than that, there were a couple of comments made at the hearing that we certainly wanted to let the committee know. There was certainly the notes we made regarding funding park improvements. Certainly, people like to have park facilities with four amenities, and they do talk about water features, outdoor play equipment, shade, lawns, basketball courts, swimming pools. So they do like the amenities at the parks, and they want to see us to continue to increase the amenities at the park, which we thought is certainly in line with our parks' strategy and what we've done with CDBG. The other part, as I mentioned, was the homeless, I haven't mentioned the homeless, but they have certainly comments about homeless programs and continue to provide services for the homeless. But the one part that we certainly, now I begin to get more and more comments, is traffic calming, and that is those traffic pedestrian fatalities we've had in the past where people certainly are more concerned about traffic and cars speeding down certain areas of South Glendale. So we have been working with the Public Works Department to be on their committees to make sure that funds are allocated towards South Glendale for traffic improvements, and especially for pedestrians in that area. So I've been on the committee, and there should be a draft report coming out to City Council for some recommendations for utilizing city funds and other available funds for traffic improvements. So that will be in line with what we're looking in CDBG, and hopefully it gets looked at and something gets implemented by, by the next year. Other than that, the continued need for social services is always a, a need, and that's for rescue for employment programs. Those are programs that we offer for, for example, ZONE Program or GYA. Those kind of programs are very popular and very well-needed in the community. So those, again, as I noted here, those are increasingly high need identified for, for us, and I would pretty much just summarize that it is very much in line with our current priorities for the past year, and nothing significant has changed, but as we see the population shifts, we may see some more questions about seniors and, of course, youth as well. So that's, that's pretty much a summary of the report.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Kurio, for the comprehensive report. I have a specific question with regard to two of the program priorities or things that came out as a result of the community meeting. Before I get into it, I'll preface it by saying, I'm a big advocate of traffic calming, and I'm, as you know, a big advocate of bulky item pickup. I'm probably the number one user of my Glendale app, reporting bulky items all over the city, and my wife gets angry at me because I pull over all the time, and it takes twice as long to get anywhere with me within the city because I like reporting the bulky items. But my question, on a more serious note, has to do with, we've talked about in the past on this committee in terms of using CDBG funds when it came to code enforcement within the, obviously, the designated area that we're trying to improve. And I've advocated in the past that if there's a need or a particularly extra need in a certain part of the city for things like code enforcement, then the city and that appropriate department ought to be taking that into consideration when they're putting forth their budgets every year, because that sort of thing, in my opinion, ought to be coming from general city budgetary funds and not necessarily CDBG funds. CDBG funds, in my opinion, whether people agree or not, is, should be really targeting those really at-risk populations in our city, and not just general improvement of quality life. So I agree with the assessment and the feedback we're receiving here that traffic calming and, let's say, bulky item pickup has a direct impact on the quality of life. But I do believe, as a philosophy personally, that the city, as part of its general service to its residents, if there's a heightened problem in one part of the city on a particular type of issue that city staff deals with, so for example, code enforcement or neighborhood services, I know City Council added budget to, to be able to increase the amount of bulky item pickup, because I was actually talking to many of the council members myself about how much I was seeing in South Glendale and how unacceptable it was. And so they added, you know, additional budget, because I asked them to go take a look themselves, and they saw what was going on in South Glendale. So my question is, is it appropriate for CDBG, limited CDBG funds, to go to things like code enforcement, which we've talked about in the past, bulky item, or even traffic calming, for example, if it were determined that a, you know, a street needed speed bumps? That's a form of traffic calming that's a capital expenditure. And there's a whole process that you have to go through with Public Works in order to get speed bumps on a city, which is quite cumbersome, and probably in a high-density area, probably no one's going to champion, or no one's even going to know how to champion how you get speed bumps on that city. So I'd be curious about the process, about the appropriateness of using CDBG, CDBG funds for those sorts of types of capital improvements.
Mr. Armenian, members of the committee, I kind of preface that, well, there's always appropriate uses of CDBG and eligible uses. Part of it is the resources that we have, which are, as you know, they're now limited, and certainly, we do see traffic calming as certainly a CDBG, as we identify priority, just the resources have not been available for that program. So we really try to work closely with our Public Works Department and actually Community Development Mobility Unit to identify those areas and see how they can assist us with us. We did have concerns on a couple of areas that we actually came out of these meetings and asked Traffic to do some traffic counts and see what, what the real need is. But in terms of funding it, it's a question of the committee and the council's desire to take resources from one area of the block grant program and add it on there. We did have resources in the past that would have funded traffic improvements and code enforcement in other areas, but with the reduced funds, it is a question of resources. But it is certainly a, I think, an area where we have more funds and so on, we certainly like to tackle some of the issues of traffic calming and assisting the neighborhoods with that application process that they need to do. So it, it's just a matter of resources right now. Code enforcement was, was able to get absorbed by the city's general fund, and again, that's still assisting residents with code enforcement, and we do work with them closely. But the traffic calming does remain an issue with resources, and whether or not we're asked later on to, to help out with that would be something the council will need to look at. I think this report that's coming out later on in the year would assist with identifying resources for traffic calming.
And is this report shared with other departments so that, like appropriate departments like Public Works, who would be the primary department, you know, managing a, you know, traffic calming effort?
Absolutely. This report, and actually, just the comments that I had, were forwarded the week after the meeting, and actually, we, we sent that off the next day to the, to the Traffic Department so that they could assess and see any traffic, and specifically, it was Griswold Street, a street off Colorado Street. We saw most of those notes, and there's also our own park, where, where we've seen burnouts and donuts, where cars kind of just do spins, and we did send those over to Traffic Section so that they can begin reviewing those and possibly do traffic counts.
What park was that, Jen?
Gris, Pacific.
Pacific?
Pacific, the back of Pacific.
On Kenilworth, on Kenilworth, between Vine and Riverdale.
But we do know that, because I do, again, I am on the committee for Pedestrian Safety Committee, and we certainly are going to look at those improvements and identify possible funding for doing some of the areas that we're looking at in Southern Glendale. So hopefully that comes through.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Let, let me just kind of add on that. It's my, I think our concern was that we are not planting funds, that, that, that the city does have code enforcement funds allocated to these census tracts. And also, on the traffic calming, because we've done them, we had to have 75% of the residents sign on to them. So in these areas where you have so many apartment owners, that seems like it would be kind of, you'd have to come up with another criteria to install them, even though you have to know how important they are. Okay, anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Madam Chair, this is actually an action item, and we are requesting for approval of the program priorities.
Chair entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made in second to approve?
Thank you. Committee Members, Armenian?
Yes.
Abadissian?
Yes.
Karibian?
Yes.
Gazarian?
Yes.
And Chair Ramirez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item.
Next on the agenda is 5B3, excuse me, transfer of $370,000 from the fiscal year 2017-18 homeless housing project. A is a motion to approve the transfer of $370,000 from the fiscal year 2017-18 homeless housing project to the fiscal year 2017-18 Pacific Park Splash Pad Project.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of committee, this report is regarding a transfer of $370,000 from the current fiscal year 2017 CDBG program for the homeless housing project into a new project identified as the Pacific Park Splash Pad Project, which is actually a project that's already been identified by the city's capital improvement program, but in need of funding. If you remember the last time we spoke, we were working on securing or finding locations for a homeless housing project that would serve about 12 to 13 homeless persons in the city, and use our CDBG funds of $640,000, which is 370 from previous year's funds and 370 from this current year, to provide the assistance for the acquisition and rehab of a project. We have not found a project yet, but we're still looking at buildings and looking at other funding sources. So one of the delays has been that we're looking at some possible county funds for Measure H. Measure H is that homeless initiative that will provide funds directed to the city for some social service programs, but also an eligibility for the city to apply for capital projects for an apartment building or some type of development building. So we're looking at that type of resource that might assist us with the whole overall picture of the acquisition of a building. In the meantime, we've identified a need to complete a fairly urgent, critical need for a splash pad improvement project, which is, if you know splash pads, are the water features that are parks where water sprays either from above or down below and provides features that are parks where water sprays either from above or down below and provides cooling, without having a swimming pool per se, a cooling effect for children to, to cool off during the summer months. As you know, this summer's been extremely hot and we've had to utilize our Pacific Park water feature pretty much non-stop and it's been used quite a bit. In fact, it's about 14 years old now, so it is time that we look at replacement for that. The timing is also correct because we do have a previous year, well, current year project for doing some shade structures in the pool area. So we wanted to expand that project and develop the pool shade structures with the splash pad project this current year and use the consultants that are designing that and make it all one seamless project and save the city some money. The improvements to that type of splash pad will include removing that current flooring for that and make it the concrete also and installing a recyclable water. Right now, that water's not recycled, it just drains out into the sewer system, so we want to be careful of that and begin to use a recycled water feature. And expand that splash pad, splash pad area so that we can add additional amenities for children to, to play on. And I did put a little sample, I'm sorry, this didn't come out in color, but I, I don't think I sent this to you, but I think I have it here, oh, but just a splash pad feature. And again, it's buckets or it's water coming down from, from a, basically a small little structure that will provide water. So we're really looking at moving on this very quickly and we wanted to trade off the funds from this current year homeless project and add it to the splash pad project. And you'll see in the following agenda item to move funds from this next current year into the homeless housing project. So it is an exchange of funds for current year for next year's proposed program so that we can get started on splash pad. We'll still have funds available for an acquisition if something would come up and use next year's funds for the development, the final construction phase of that project. So we think our timing worked out nicely with Measure H and with completing a project that we desperately need right now before the next year.
Just the housing project going on, pushing it to the next year, obviously Measure H, we don't know the dollar amount, so it could either cover most of it or small since we don't know that. Do we know when we'll know the dollar amount roughly, approximately?
Chair Ramirez, members of the committee, Measure H, we will be getting direct funding as part of the Glendale COC in the amount of 200, about $278,000, but that's with five different strategies. One strategy being case management is in the amount of 14,000. For capital, we'll be getting $60,000 a year from Measure H. We're still negotiating with county and county CEO's office, but we're looking at 270,000 for five different strategies, not only for housing, but also for case management, rapid rehousing, motel vouchers and so on.
And lastly, on the, on the splash, total cost, how much are we looking at roughly? 700, did I read, was it 700 change?
It's 740 in the report.
740,000 and we're allocating 370?
740 to 800,000.
And where are we getting the rest?
Rest of the funding is with our, funded through the CIP program, our capital project program. We have about 354,000 funded this year.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? You have questions? No. So first of all, just a clarification, when you say recycled water, it's not actually the purple pipe recycled water, you're talking about recirculating the water.
Correct, yes, it's recirculated.
The water will be recirculated and chlorinated. It'll have a filtration system similar to a swimming pool and we will have, you know, our LA County Health Certificates and inspections and so on.
Just wanted to clarify that so no one gets confused.
It will be definitely chlorinated.
Kids have recycled water.
No. We're having a similar system put in at Fremont with the Fremont Park renovation project. So we'll have two water features that will be with filtered, recycled water or recirculated water.
Thank you. My second question is, so since we're kicking the can down the road on the homeless project amount, what's the impact? Are we looking at another equal amount coming out of next year's funds pre-designated to the homeless program, right?
Correct, Mr. Remington, members of the committee, you, yeah, you want to take, again, the money we have now, use it for the splash pad and add the money in the 18-19 budget, which would be the next item to replace that. So you won't go past $640,000. Now, that doesn't mean if we have, find a project that we will not intend to use our funds as much as possible for this year. Doesn't delay seeking a site, doesn't delay implementing something. We just know we'll need the money later on as well to finish off any site improvements that would happen. The funds, again, that we're looking at are not only the funds we're getting directly from the county, but applying for some capital projects that, funding from the county as well. So we know that might be delayed, but again, that might help with the whole entire budget and we'll have to see.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? None?
Just one other question on, obviously drought has been moved or removed this year, but in the past, we had that issue and being October and it's 100 degrees outside, is one of those catch 22s. So if we are, do we shut down the water fountain because we're in drought, but yet it's too hot, when it gets to use it because it's hot? How would that work?
Chair Ramirez, members of the advisory committee, due to the drought or the drought that we had last year or the last couple of years, we kept all of our water features open starting June 15th to October 15th, 11 o'clock till 5:00 PM. Depending on the weather and the drought, we can extend it to 7, 8:00 PM, but we will still keep the facilities open, the water feature player, water features open, especially now since both the water features will be with recirculated water. So we're not, the water waste is very minimal.
Right, you have the evaporation and all that stuff, obviously, but, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Entertain a motion?
Make a
To approve the transfer of funds.
Make a motion to transfer 370,000 from fiscal year 2017-18 homeless housing project to the Pacific Park Splash Pad Project.
Second.
Second?
Yes.
Motion made in second.
Committee members, Armenian?
Yes.
Abadiscian?
Yes.
Gharibian?
Yes.
Kazarian?
Yes.
Chair Ramirez?
Yes.
Next item.
Next item is 5B4, review and approve the preliminary fiscal year 2018-19 CDBG funding allocation plan by funding category. That is a motion to approve the preliminary fiscal year 2018-19 CDBG funding allocation plan by funding category.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the committee, this report is essentially the 2018-19 funding plan that we're proposing to present to the city council with CDBG advisory committee approval to approve the funding categories for each of the areas in CDBG that we administer. Doesn't approve the exact projects for the RFP or the, about the RFP for community project, approves the actual categories. And we're anticipating about $1.6 million in CDBG funds. Again, that's a conservative estimate based on what I looked at last year and what HUD may propose for, for 2018-19. I would say at this time, we do not have a federal budget for any of the 2018-19 programs, so we are certainly waiting to hear back from Congress on what the budget is going to be like. There have been recommendations to fully fund CDBG from both the House and Senate, with the Senate actually giving, no, actually, I believe the House amendment giving a little bit more funding for CDBG, which was a great effort by our associations to continue to advocate for CDBG. As you remember, earlier this year, the administration had called for a $0 and funding cut for the CDBG program, but certainly if our associations and our communities were able to at least get in the allocations from Congress committees for fully funding CDBG for 2018-19. So our estimate is 1.6 million. We do not have any program income or unappropriate fund balances that we're gonna program for the year. However, we certainly know that there's an estimate and we can go up or down. We're hoping that we will go up again this year and this will be a conservative estimate. We do anticipate spending our 20% of allocation for administration, which is $320,000. That goes for admin for the CDBG program and also assisting with the continuing care homeless programs. And public services always remains at a 15% cap of our allocation, so that'll remain at $240,000. That's the amount of funds that will go out to the community for the proposals for RFP. Capital improvements, those are the projects that we at the city pre-designate. They, again, we have usually typically three projects. This year, it's the homeless housing project, again, because we are swapping funds, we propose to use this year's allocation to, to do the homeless housing project. And of course, the Section 108 program, which is a senior building, which we had shown earlier, that is posed for 232,000. And the car park shade structure, which we have a small little design on that for a sample of what we're looking at implementing for our outdoor play equipment project. The outdoor play equipment is a grant that we're looking into to buy these equipment that, if you've seen Palmer Park and some of the other parks, outdoor equipment is certainly used very actively by the community. Obviously, certain stations out there that really need some shading and really need to be covered and we anticipate that this one at Car Park will be one of those parks that'd be really heavily utilized for, for the residents there. Finalizing that, we'll have the community projects at $400,000, which is the same amount of funding that we had in the previous, well, previous year, but then we added 34,000 because of the, the number of projects that came in. So we do have currently $400,000 allocated for the community to request on the RFP. The only other caveat is that we do have $16,682 approximately that we have still unspent from our, our grant from the previous year. Now, I have not programmed that because we are certainly want to have a little bit of a cushion, a little bit of reserve in case our funding goes up or down next year. It's about 1% of our budget and staff's view is that we maybe should keep a little bit of a cushion in case we find out that we get a little bit of reduction. We can always come back to the committee at a later time and say after we receive our entitlement that we have X amount of money and we want to make the 16,000 available along with any other program income that comes in, in this year and hopefully with higher entitlement. So we, staff want to stay a little conservative because the way Washington right now, we don't know all of the details and how much the, the effects of the budget or any other legislation might affect the program now. So we do want to go with the RFP amounts of 400,000 and 240,000 to the community to have them RFP for projects. And that's for this year.
Any discussion? Go ahead.
I have a specifically question about this outdoor park proposal. So I know it's not our role to review the entire project, but since there's money being requested for part of it, I feel like we could ask at least some questions and I'm just curious because we don't have the full background in terms of data. I'm just curious, do we have actual evidence or data that exercise equipment in a park actually gets used versus, let's say, a water feature? I ask that because in the previous report, we talked about the increasing number of elderly, senior citizens, we have kind of disadvantaged youth, and so that's part of the premise, I think, of renovating the water feature at Pacific Park. Does this park have a water feature? I've driven by it, but I haven't actually been inside the park, so I'm just curious, you know, before we go spending on this kind of thing, whether we being the CDBG portion of it, I'd just be curious to get a sense of the larger project.
There is no water feature at Car Park. We're currently looking into renovating the playground, getting, installing a brand-new playground. We have mulch that we use there, the fiber actually, and we're gonna take the fiber out because there's a drainage issue and install rubberized surfacing. And we have a large concrete area, size of a basketball court, there was a basketball court, but we, about five, six years ago, the neighbors in the area asked us to take those basketball courts out. So there's a nice little piece of concrete slab that we would like to install the outdoor fitness equipment. We did meet with one of our vendors that have, that has installed at Palmer Park, Maple Park, and we thought that a shade structure over that area would be ideal. If you go to Maple Park on any given day, there's seniors, I mean, users of all ages using the park and the exercise equipment, same with Palmer Park. So the exercise equipment, it's low intensity, it's used by your body weight. You can, you know, work out your chest, your arms, cardiovascular, so all, it's used by all ages and we've been receiving a lot of requests to have additional exercise equipment in our parks. We're also working on Pelonconie Park too, which is funded by development impact fees. Ideally, we would like to have shade structures, but that's the decision of the committee.
Yeah, and I don't have any problems with obviously providing shade structure, I'm just curious about, you know, what gets used, what, what gets the most use and what's the demand from the, the patrons of the, of the park beyond shade?
Yeah. You know? Water feature would be ideal in that area, but we do have a water feature at Ceritos, which is South Glendale, Way South Glendale. Both of them get used. You can use the exercise equipment year-round, water feature is three, four months out of the year.
And my only other question is, so just, just to confirm, because of this shade structure project, the actual amount that'll be available compared to last year, assuming all things stay the same, it's about 34,000, not about, but 34,522 less because of the pre-designated amount of 38,000 that would be going to this shade structure, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions? None? Over here?
Just overall, as far as parks and shades go, I have a six-years-old and a seven-years-old and I know how shades and parks go. It's always a problem, especially to get hot and you can't touch it, you cannot, the kids use it at any age, even my age, I want to use it, so it's great. Again, we're not, I think, in a position to question the park or the, this is just the grant part, but the, adding these, this is great items, but is it turning into more of a Venice Beach workout? Parks versus more of a family parks, is that gonna throw that off as far as, that's just as a curiosity, again, it's not my job or position to question it, I'm just concerned.
Yes, it's more of a family park. You have the seniors walking around, they'll exercise. The Venice Beach ones, they're more weight-intensive. We won't be having, you know, the dumbbells or weight bars or any fitness equipment that have actual metal attached to them. Like I mentioned earlier, you get on top of the machine, you'll use your own weight and it's really low intensity.
Thank you.
Anything?
Nope.
Nothing at all?
My, my preference would have been a water feature. I know, based on the previous report, that costs three-quarters of a million dollars, which, you know, is a different cost category, obviously. But, you know, as we're thinking about future allocations, we've talked about this, you know, investing in our parks, I think, is an important part of this committee's job and so as you develop your vision for these parks that are in the right locations, I think, you know, let's, let's plan on, you know, how we can make it as useful as possible to the patrons of the park. I'm a little bit personally skeptical of the, the weight and exercise equipment, just in terms of prioritization compared to, let's say, a water feature, because usually the parks during the day, I think, from what I've seen, is, you know, you're seeing a lot of people with kids using them. But again, you guys are closer to it, so I'm deferring to your judgment on this and I'll obviously support the proposal.
I had a question about how durable are these, I guess they're canvas and the replacement? How often would you have to replace these, these are, you know, out there in the elements?
Chair Ramirez, members of the advisory committee, the warranty for Chair Ramirez, members of the advisory committee, the warranty for the shade structures are between 10 and 15 years.
15 years?
Yes. And they withstand between winds between 80 to 120 miles an hour.
So they do have a warranty?
Yes.
Okay. Also, Mr. Correa, don't we have the equipment at Palmer Park? How's that going?
The equipment at Palmer Park is along the walkpath, and it's heavily used.
Okay, retain a motion to approve.
All right, motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
I apologize. I didn't hear who did the second.
I did.
Thank you.
I beat Commissioner.
Avedisian made the motion. Committee members, Armenian?
Yes.
Avedisian?
Yes.
Caribbean?
Yes.
Kazarian?
Yes.
Chair Ramirez?
Yes, motion passes. Next item.
Next is 5B5, review and approve a fiscal year 2018-19 request for funding proposal, RFP, for public social service projects and CDVG funding application. At A is a motion to approve a fiscal year 2018-19 RFP for public social services and CDVG funding application.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, this is, there's two parts. First is the CDVG social service, RFP. That's the RFP that goes out to the community for public social services, essentially services that the agencies are, are providing, services to low and moderate-income persons in Glendale. That currently is at $240,000. Again, we're recommending $240,000 this year for the RFP so that agencies can apply for the funds. We expect to go out to bid next month with the RFP. Nothing significant has changed in the RFP as far as our priorities go. Again, we do look at what the current trends are and certainly like to note that there are employment programs that are certainly were identified high, high priority by the community and some of our data, any type of youth programs, and also, of course, the homeless and senior services have tended to increase in need. But again, any program that meets these eligibility requirements, as far as program priorities, the other requirements for them to qualify for funds as being a nonprofit, as having a financial control system, as meeting our requirements for non-discrimination services and employment, would all qualify for block grant funds. And again, we have scheduled some dates for the RFP to go out and for the technical assistance meeting for our agencies. We highly recommend the agencies to attend the technical assistance meeting. It's not a mandatory requirement, but highly, highly suggest that they come so that they're not submitting proposals with numerous errors or what we call weaknesses. That, a lot of that gets eliminated by attending our meetings. So we definitely, when we talk to our agencies, to make sure they're able to attend the technical assistance meeting where they can get their, their questions answered and hopefully come up with a good proposal.
When is the technical assistance?
November 29.
November 21, is that the date?
29.
There's a page I was, I guess, missing. So that, that is for the RFP for social services. The capital improvement project is essentially the same. However, there's $400,000 available for capital improvement projects for community facility improvements. Any type of nonprofit that is eligible may apply for funds. However, there is caveat to that as well. We do not pay for any pre-development costs such as design, planning studies, or any other type of pre-development costs before funds are granted. So essentially, agencies use their own funds as a match to provide design plans or any other type of pre-construction costs before the project is started. So that, again, is a requirement for CDVG. We will get hold at RFP technical assistance meeting on Wednesday, November 29 at 10:00 a.m. here at the city. And applications for all these proposals will be due in December 28, 2017, at 5:00 p.m. The RFP also for capital improvement includes questions regarding solar panel projects. And those, those questions require a bit more detail as far as the construction cost estimates and how much of electricity we're saving and what's the kilowatts that are being used for the solar system and how much will we save in electricity costs. What we're learning and certainly want to make sure is that when we provide funds, if in fact there's a proposal and the committee decides to look at this, is if there's solar panel systems requested that, we look at making sure that at least 90%, at least 90% of the electricity is solar. And we don't, certainly want to look at a project that's only requesting, only getting 10% of an investment for solar savings. So, because there's a high cost in the panels and the other electrical equipment that it doesn't come out at the end with savings of funds, but if you're only helping them save 10% of their savings. There's other cost savings that could be done for 10%, such as lighting systems, windows, and so on, that could help. Cool roof that can help with electricity. So we're really looking at this in more detail as we go along each year. We've also asked questions about the savings on electrical costs and how that will benefit the organization, detailing out the quantitative numbers that they're detailing as far as monthly savings, whether it's regarding additional personnel, equipment, supplies, what type of program will benefit from this, and where the savings will be applied to, and how long, and what's the term of that. So a lot of questions on those projects, and certainly those questions were being asked for the current providers as well. So, so far, again, last year, we did not receive proposal from solar panel, but I'm sure there's certainly interest in solar panel systems this year for some of our agencies. So that's the RFPs for both. If there's any question, be free to ask, answer any questions for them.
A general question. I'm sure, I believe I've asked this question before. I just can't remember it. The RFP process, would you send or how do, general organization, do you send any kind of a notification to all nonprofits throughout the city, or it's something that they have to approach the city and find out about the RFPs and openings and all that?
Yes, Mr. Avedisian, members of the committee, we do publish a notice in the paper, of course, for the RFP. We do put that in online on our webpage. And we do send out letters to our nonprofits that have been applying in the past. Certainly, any new ones that come in request for RFP, we put them on our mailing list. So a lot of it is through the mail or through email to our existing projects, programs. Now, there may be some new nonprofits that develop here are not aware of us. We really try to get the word out through advertising, through the media, so that nonprofits are aware of block grant funds. Certainly, we do get referrals from other agencies that might know of an agency that get requests for funds. So we do, with the internet and our web presence, are able to identify more nonprofits. We don't have a list of all the nonprofits in the community, but the majority that have provided, you know, provided for funds in the past do receive notifications. We do want to anticipate, again, having as much broad advertising as possible, but we don't have, you know, a list of every single nonprofit per se in that it may be eligible. And a lot of them are nonprofits or hospitals and other agencies that may not qualify for CDVG funds. But at this point, we do go off existing lists and advertise in the newspaper.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question. So back to your last point, which was about the solar panel systems. Under 11C on page 7, where you talk about the requirement to describe in detail how the savings of electrical costs as a result of solar will benefit the organization and the clients served. However, at the very end of that, so I appreciate that's, that's a result of our discussions about these sorts of projects. In the last sentence, you say if the savings will be used to offset existing costs described in detail with itemized amounts, where the savings will be applied to, i.e. rent, existing personnel, insurance, telephone utilities. I just wanted to kind of highlight, you know, if, if the savings is used for, let's say, some other operational expense like a telephone, that to me is not, again, the point of, you know, benefiting the end user. Whereas, let's say, hopefully, existing personnel costs where it will help them provide the appropriate personnel to run the programs, that's a little bit closer to what I'm getting at in terms of getting a more direct link of CDVG funds to the end user of the facility. Just something to keep an eye on. I know you, staff needs some wiggle room to make the appropriate judgments on these things. So I don't want to prescribe anything beyond what you have in here, but wanted to highlight kind of the spirit of, at least from my perspective, what we've been talking about.
And you were looking at which, which page?
Page 11 of the capital.
It's page, page 7 of the capital improvement application, which is from the back.
Page 11.
And 11C.
Page 11.
Page 11. Page 11C.
That's the social.
That's a good point. We will make sure that we get a good answer from this. And if it doesn't come up clear again, we will make a note to make sure it's identified as a weakness so that they can explain that a bit more.
That's the actual application.
Yeah, okay. Any other discussion?
I have a question. If the savings are, let's say, $20,000, shouldn't they ask us where they're going to spend before they spend it?
That's a good question. We probably want to know, because typically the, the process is that it takes time for them to finish it, and then they'll know exactly where they may spend it or not. Depends on their budget. I think their proposed proposal of where we might save it and use it. So that's, that's something we'd have to look at after, well, obviously before, but after they're done and look at what they stated. But I don't know if we can say exactly they would use it for equipment and when it takes us a year later and they have to use it for something else. So I think there has to be some flexibility as far as them using the funds for some other savings. So I'm not sure that answers your question or...
Well, there's two kinds of savings. Let's say if we paid $100,000, they did panel for this year. Next year, they don't have that money to spend, and they saved on electricity. So savings on the savings. Where did that money, that money's going to go? Shouldn't we know before they spend somewhere else? Are we okay that spending or not?
That's, I think that's a question that we'd have to look at, what exactly they're proposing to fund. And I'm not sure if this committee, we can decide at this point yet as far as, are you allowing them to spend on telephone, insurance? If they have savings, say, we need the money because our insurance went up, you know, $10,000, so we're going to spend it on insurance, or because of, you know, increased personnel, we now have more workers' comp insurance. So, but something we definitely would want to look at and how much savings they're going to have per month. I think that's what we're getting to now as far as looking at their budgets and seeing what items we can look at. And again, it could be some questions on policy, whether or not we don't really want to fund, you know, telephone insurance. But again, telephone may mean we need a new system. Our system is 10 years old and our telephone system, we need to upgrade to a better system. So we need to save from the $100,000, $10,000 for a new telephone system. So I don't want to tie nonprofits too much. I think staff will have something reasonable. We don't want to fund travel now to conferences all over the country or something that's going to increase their, their costs, but something that's reasonable, I think, we need, want to look at. But that's a very good point. I think we need to look at the savings and where they're going. And again, we're going to monitor these agencies and we're going to see where their accounting, we are doing it now, their accountants are doing the number crunching, saying, this is where we can save. And we'll have a year-by-year comparison. So this is in 2016, they were spending, you know, $19,000 electricity. Now they're spending zero. And $19,000 now went over to, could be personnel, could be equipment costs. So we want to look at line by line in those, those budgets. But again, this is fairly new for us, so we're going to have to do some, some due diligence and really be not only flexible, but reasonable within their cost. But thank you for that comment.
Any other discussion? A motion.
I make a motion.
And that's what item 5?
He did cover 5B5 and 5B6, so you could do it together or you can do it separate?
Let's do them together.
I make a motion. 5A and 5, and 6A.
I'll second that.
In the second. Motion made in second.
Committee members, Armenian?
Yes.
Avedisian?
Yes.
Caribbean?
Yes.
Kazarian? And Chair Ramirez?
Yes. Motion carried. Five whole. And we have the last item, wasn't it?
Next on the agenda is 6, committee staff comments.
I have comments, if I may.
Yes, please.
Well, first of all, Madam Chair, congratulations on your selection and co-chair, Armenian. And also, I want to thank, thank you, thank the committee, the past committee and now the new committee for giving me the opportunity last year, serving this committee. I hope I served well or up to your expectations. And looking forward to working with our newest member of the committee. Hopefully, we can achieve a bit better work in this coming year. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, if I may, I just wanted to let the committee know that we are meeting with the City Council on November the 7th at 2:30 p.m. with the City Council Housing Authority to approve the program priorities, the funding plan and the RFP for the fiscal of 2018-19, essentially the items you approved for, for us, including the transfer of funds. So just as a note, if the committee certainly would like to attend, we will be doing a staff report and we will be proposing the items that were approved by the committee today.
What time is that, 3?
At 2:30 p.m. Afternoon meeting.
3.
Or 3, I'm sorry, 3 p.m. 3 p.m.
Yeah, that was right.
3 p.m.
Well, if there is no other business, no other comments, general consent, we can adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Please adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.